Okay, welcome to the, what's today's?
July 27.
July 27, planning board meeting. We have a small number of items to go through tonight. We will be starting out with considering a recommendation to the ZBA for an application at 245 Park Lane. Then we will be going through some administrative items and we will be having the opening, the scheduled public hearing on the applicant associated with McCullard Lane, but we will be immediately continuing that without discussion until the August 10, 2021 meeting at 8:00 PM. So if you're here for that, that there will not be any discussion or consideration of that. With that said, oh, and this meeting is being recorded, so if you object, please hang up. And then just one, oh, are we still administrative items? So we can start with the recommendation of the zoning board of appeals on the application of.
Do we need to do roll call anymore since we're divided?
Let's do it to be safe.
Yes.
Okay, we'll have a roll call. So Andrew.
Here.
Linda.
Here.
Nate is not here. And Haley. All right. And Burton.
Kristen.
Kristen.
Kate McInnes.
Kate, thank you. All right. With those formalities taken care of, we'll move to the application of forgive the pronunciation, Boden, like licence for a special permit under section 7.2 and 11.6 of the zoning by law to construct a pool within the floodplain conservancy district at 245 Park Lane. So should we, Elizabeth, should we hear from the applicant on that? Okay. So.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. If you could. My name is Ian Ainsley. Sure, my name is Ian Ainsley. I'm an engineer working with the homeowners who are here with me tonight, Bo and Lisa Whissage. I'm going to pull up the plan if I can on my screen. Maybe in a second. Okay, can you see my screen?
It's showing that you're starting to share, but the content hasn't grown up yet.
Good.
Now we can see your desktop.
Now we could see it, there we go. All right. Getting there. Bit slow. Okay, can you see the plan now?
Not quite yet, give it a second. Still just seeing there, now we can see the plan.
Okay, good. So this is an existing house on Park Lane. What the owners want to do is add a pool in the back here in some kind of pool decking, landscape patio area. Because a portion of this property is located in the floodplain, it requires a special permit from the zoning board of appeals, which we have applied for and we're coming to you because the pointing board makes a recommendation to the zoning board on that application. This plan and this project has been granted a order of conditions from the natural resources commission already. So they have the environmental permit that they need. And now we're kind of coming to you. Your recommendation, again, this is a pool in the back of an existing dwelling. It is in floodplain, we've tried to get it as far out of the floodplain as possible, you know, nobody wants a pool in the front yard, so it's not in front. Winds up being in the back, this whole area kind of on the right side of the plan is all floodplain. And this dash line right here is the zoning setback, so not a whole lot of room to put something in if it's not in floodplain. So we try to get it out as much as we can. I think we're filling at the very most one foot, but generally probably six inches on average vertically. And whatever we are filling for the pool, we are replicating up here, cutting out an equivalent area. And this patio right here is going to be removed and some cutting is going to be going on there. So that you'll get a net zero in the volume of floodplain storage to be removed.
Net zero or is there comp?
Elizabeth, you said 1.5.
So when I spoke to Delia Ian.
Yeah.
One to one or one, one and a half?
Uh, one and a half, it's actually more than one and a half. I think I have a table on here, it's 610 versus 265, so it's probably closer to two to one than than 1.5.
Okay. All right, so for planning board members that are new to this, this is, this is a floodplain conservancy district. And whenever you are building in the floodplain conservancy district, there's certain types of structures to the degree you are encroaching on the floodplain, you need to obtain a special permit from the ZBA. And the thing that that we look for is whether there is compensatory storage. It's the idea being that the building is taking up what would be flood storage in the event of flooding. So they're doing that at a one and a half to one ratio. Well, let me ask you Ian or the applicant, are there any other things you want to add? Pretty detailed in terms of, because we've got the, we've got the order of conditions, we can see the things that are going to be requirements that you've agreed to, so.
No, I don't think there's anything to add. They have a contractor, a pool contractor, a windskeeper already part of this that did the design. So this is, you know, pretty, pretty much right on what's going to be built in reality. But you don't always get sometimes it's kind of conceptual and then they bring in the people after.
Do, can we put into the section of the bylaw where is it just a special permit?
7.2.
7.2 about the floodplain and then 11.6 and special permit, right? So you're just making a recommendation to the board of appeals. So as part of the NRC review, the assistant town engineer did review the plans and the compensatory storage and did agree with those calculations. It's 7.2.6.2. The planning board natural resources commission shall submit the board written recommendation including at least an evaluation of those use, including its probable affect or impact on the town's water supply, the quality of water in the area, the natural flow pattern of water sources nearby or pertinent floodwater storage areas or other areas subject to seasonal periodic flooding and the general health safety officer of the inhabitants of the town and a recommendation as to whether a special permit should be granted and whether any restrictions should be imposed upon those use as a condition of such permit. And the standard for the proposal within the district is at 17.3, is that right? Such proposals may arise flood damage opportunities. Sorry, did you tell me what the standard is? The planning boards in 7.2.6.2. So. But you also asked, remember the floodplain conservancy was just recently updated? And I think the case application came in after June 13. So I don't know what's the sections you're looking at, they should be the same.
Oh, I see.
But I'm not, that's why I just read it. So you're evaluating it based on its probable affect or impact on water supply, quality of water in the area, natural flow pattern of water sources and pertinent floodwater storage areas. And general health safety well-being habits.
I saw that the application said that there was no known incidents of flooding, is that including in this past month of July?
Well, the application was done before that, I guess the homeowners are on, they can tell you whether there was a pond up there or not. But they've lived there for a while, as far as I know, and haven't seen anything.
No, no flooding.
Okay. Does any board members have any further questions either?
Just a comment that it seems like the, the aspects of our deliberation have to do with ecological resources or sort of taking care of final order conditions. That flood storage issue is more explicitly about what they are and so seems like these other boards have to offer.
And I would agree with that. So with that said, do we, do we, would anybody like to make a motion to make a recommendation, I presume for, since somebody raised an objection, for recommending approval of the application to this ZBA?
I will, I'd like to make a motion that the board recommend the special permit be approved for Boden, I apologize, Lindsage.
Whissage.
Whissage, apologies. To construct a pool within the floodplain conservancy district at 245 Park Lane, parcel 1820. Do we need anything else in the motion?
Um, no, I'll just in full brief, you can keep commenting about other boards and committees, you know, the natural resources commission is, the compensatory storage is adequate, that there's impacts on ecological resources or flooding and.
Good.
Thank you.
I'd second that. And so we'll take a vote, beginning with Linda.
I just had one question, do we need to ask any questions about the Norway maple that's being removed?
I don't think so, it's an invasive.
It wouldn't trigger the tree by law?
No.
Okay. Linda, did you have a, I mean, do you have a question about that or a comment?
Just if it triggered the tree by law, given its location.
And since Andrew is new on the phone, can we explain, and for those of us who have been here for a while, why it doesn't trigger the bylaw?
So under the tree preservation by law, removal of invasive species, which the Norway maple is an invasive species, does not trigger the bylaw.
Okay.
And where is the, is it in the tree protection zone? Where is that? I can't see it on the plan, is it that right there?
It's kind of, yeah, it's right in the back corner, yep.
But it's just in the, it's the same as the building.
It is, but also adds, the construction of a pool does not trigger
Yeah.
the tree protection by law regardless.
Okay. Good to know. Okay.
Great question. All right.
Got that clarified and yes, yes, I'm in favor.
Okay, I'll go next to Andrew.
Yeah, yes.
Okay, thank you, Andrew, and I think that's everybody on the board who's online, right? So Kate.
Yes.
Kristen.
Yes.
And I am a yes. So we will send that recommendation to the ZBA and we thank you for your time this evening.
Thanks very much.
Thank you, thank you, very appreciated.
Okay. We now, the next item on the agenda is that hearing, but we're going to move to administrative items since we've got on the, on the schedule, we've got some additional time here. The first thing I wanted to just go, just talk, get the sense of the board. We had wanted to go, or I and some other board members had wanted to go back to hybrid meetings to benefit from in person. It seems like, maybe I'm freaking out, but I mean, I've started to wear masks when I go to the grocery store again, even though I'm vaccinated. And the CDC said today, you know, you should start doing that depending on where you are. I think we're good and concrete, I think that board of health said we're above 80% vaccinated, but still how are people feeling going forward for, for thinking towards August 10th, which will likely have a large attendance because of two very big, or two big projects on the agenda about going back to remote or just trying to stick with hybrid?
Do you want to make a plan for August 10th or going forward?
I think, I think the lesson I've learned from tonight is that we should probably, to the degree we plan, we're working with our notice deadlines.
Yep.
Go day by day and.
Well, that's what I was wondering, if you wanted to, you know, try to make a procedure from now on or to say, well, let's plan for August 10th? Or maybe meetings over a certain size, we do a certain way? If we think.
Maybe I'll play it by, I mean, rather than coming up with rules, but you know, play it by ear, something could be. I mean, I think August 10th, there's potential for dozens and dozens of people to want to come into this room.
And we definitely want them to participate, so if more participation means they call in online, I think that we should definitely accommodate that. Is, are there any constraints that we're operating within if we say yes, we'll do hybrid?
This is your constraint. You, if somebody wants to come here in person and the room is packed, you have to allow in-person meetings, not like the board can meet here and everybody else has to.
Oh.
Go virtual, that's not possible.
Okay.
If it's a, if it's an in-person, in-person public meeting, it is a public meeting and anybody can come.
But we could, we could still do hybrid and anybody could come or anybody could call in.
Correct.
Okay.
But you just couldn't refuse people admission is what you're saying.
And so if there's more than, you know, a couple dozen people in here, it's.
Then they would go home and call in.
No.
No. No?
I don't think you can force people to do, I don't think you can force people out of the room, that's kind of the.
I don't think we would force people out, I think people would have other options.
I'm, I'm not sure Harvey Wheeler is capable of doing that yet.
Oh, so is it just easier to go remote for the 10th?
That, that's my feeling, I mean, I, I personally, I don't like two things. First of all, I think now being in crowded indoor space is not a great idea period. But I also think I don't like people sitting there wondering, well, has everybody got vaccinated? And so just where things are right now, I would suggest going back to, to virtual meetings, even though I am, I, I I did want to get back in person. Does anybody object to that for the 10th anyways? And we'll see where things go from there.
I don't object. But I disagree. I was doing things. Well, what would your suggestion be for the 10th? I think we should just let the, like the boards of health make the rules on gathering and mask wearing and gather again to be in person, because I think that the quality of the interaction is is benefited by being in person and so I'd like to go back to person as much as we can. Oh, but you're saying we can't.
The board of health is.
The state, whoever's in charge of this.
The, you know, I would love to defer to professionals, I really don't like being like a nervous knowing about things. The only issue I think with that is we have, what's our deadline on providing notice? How many days in advance do you need to know each thing?
You mean to publicize where we're having a meeting?
So typically, what we did with this agenda is it got published in person and via Zoom. We would just have to change the publication to say it may be in person and via Zoom, or it may be all Zoom, you know, check the.
Oh, so we can have that decision closer, I was thinking we need to know quite a ways in advance.
No, you don't know, we need to know quite a ways in advance.
Okay.
I think from noticing the public with, you know, I wouldn't make it the same, you know, the same day of a meeting.
Well, with the exception of you'd have to find an office space, like, or, you know, meeting room space.
This is it.
Oh, okay, okay, I just make it your.
Even the select order meeting in here.
Okay, so we don't have the option of a larger meeting space, even though we anticipate a larger crowd. But I still feel like if you offer people the option of hybrid, most people will call in and say, you know, if we had hybrid, this is the number of seats that we have.
But you can't do that.
Oh.
Yeah, that's the problem.
Oh, all right, well then, to reeather in person 100%, and we're at Harvey Wheeler? No, we're not at Harvey Wheeler, we're here, that's it. No, no, but we're not hybrid though. I think we just can't do hybrid at Harvey Wheeler.
I don't believe we can do hybrid at Harvey Wheeler.
But we can do in person.
Yes.
Okay. I just. Scoping on the alternative. But so, so are you thinking that we're not going to hear enough from the public? And can everybody hear us okay that's on the line? No, I'm not.
Yes.
Okay, so you think that the deliberations are better when we're in person? And but I wouldn't mind pointing, I mean, I guess if we call it for remote for the 11th, I wouldn't, the 10th, thank you. So I don't start spreading rumors. I think it'd be nice to try to go back in person after that, I guess.
I, and I'm with you, I would like to get back in person as soon as possible, I'm just looking at the, the shape of the graph right now and it's it is exponential and, you know, it seems like the guidance is changing pretty quickly. So I guess we could leave it and say, change the notice to say it may be in person.
I think that's confusing and I think I just prompted that, I think you should make a call on it.
Let, then let's do remote for the 10th.
What you, what you can do is at each meeting, you can have a discussion about your next meeting and what's on the agenda and, and you know, figure it out from there.
It's nice to have the option.
Yeah. Especially like snow days.
Okay. Great, so we're good for.
Yeah, so that, I mean, this winter, that will, that will be something because you can look out two weeks. There's a snowstorm, you know, you just, you make it remote so you don't end up having to cancel on.
Yep.
Okay. With that, we received, we received two statements, I know I reviewed one set. Draft meeting minutes for the, let me just check what date that was. June 8.
Yeah, I think you only received June 8.
Okay. Let's go ahead and, and did anybody have any comments to the, to the June 8 minutes? Any questions or edits? Would anybody like to make a motion to approve the minutes of June 8?
I would move to approve it to you, as written.
I will second that, thank you very much. And so we'll start with Linda. Linda. Vote yes or, or no to approve the minutes of June 8?
Yes.
Andrew.
I will abstain because I don't think I was there.
You were, but you technically need to abstain on that, but we don't need your vote, so, okay.
Yes.
Hey.
Yes.
And I wrote yes. Thank you. The next thing is the, oh, I'm sorry, somehow I skipped over the more important thing, which is to finalize the 2021, 2022 planning board goals, which were circulated, that was earlier today, which was the updated goals that we provided a lot of feedback back in June on. And so.
I did receive an email from Haley with a couple of suggested edits, if you'd like either. I'll screen share. So item 6. Including the sentence drawing as much as possible from the example from other towns. We do North Hampton. Next suggested edit, version 57, research site requirements, the board will consider moving some a sustainability or consider moving from a sustainability checklist and site review to requirements that is allowed under Massachusetts law, especially as it relates to LID.
Do we know what our latitude is with requirements?
I don't off the top of my head.
So we would, that's part of the research.
I guess I would say, yeah, well, I was going to say we'll investigate, consider, I guess it's the same.
Those are the only comments you have.
You, can you quickly, since your, your updates weren't marked, just for the board, run through the, you don't need to go line by line, but the general sense of what you.
From the last discussion, there was a item, sustainability and green zoning, and the board decided to delete that and incorporate those things into the subdivision rules and regs, site plan rules and regulations, and then also incorporated it into the first item, which is the just your annual town meeting updates. To, the board will continue to evaluate various green, and that should say green zoning and sustainability measures that may be implemented within the bylaw.
Okay.
And then, oh, the last item, sorry, I got that in, I had a conversation with, well, you know, conversations with MAPC and on the MBTA community zoning requirements. And the state still has not informed communities when they will need to comply. There's some conversation that it may be as early as spring of 2022, but they don't know yet. So my one question that I have asked MAPC that I have not gotten an answer back on is whether our current zoning, which in the Thoreau People Business District and the Concord, West Concord Business District and West Concord Village District, does allow combined commercial residential, and it is by right, you meet certain parameters. There is no set limitation on the number of units per acre. So whether that does meet the new MBTA community requirements, I'm not sure. There is a opinion, you can submit for an opinion to the state. The website where you go to submit is, is not very detailed on what it is you need to do, so I've just asked some questions. So we may already comply. I think some of the restrictions, such as the open space requirement. I I'm not sure DHCD is going to say that that does comply because it's so descriptive, it's doesn't, it's really not meeting their by right what they want someone to be able to do, but, so I'm still looking into that. And the other item I need to look into is is a community does not comply with this, it's the three funding programs. The housing choice initiative program, which conquered is, I do not believe is a housing choice community to begin with. So I need to verify that with the regional housing services office. Local capital projects funds, I have to ask somebody at the state, because the only information I found is is in the statute, it's revenue from gaming commission that goes into this special fund. I cannot find a single item or description on what is getting funded from these millions and millions of dollars. And then the mask works program, which conquered is eligible as we have a very large project, it would be, if there was a large housing project that we wanted to put in and wanted to extend, you know, sewer to this project, you can submit grants for large infrastructure projects that help promote housing, so. We haven't, we, we've never submitted for a mask works grant, but we are eligible, whether it's something you do, I don't know.
So the takeaway from that is, as of right now, we don't have guidance from the state in terms of the implementation deadline. It could happen in spring of 2022, which would mean we'd have to cram this into any special meeting.
I don't, I don't.
Done like.
Well, if, if they say you have. Well, if, if they say you have to have something adopted by the spring of 2022, or you're not going to be eligible for these three grants.
We don't.
We're not in jeopardy of losing.
I know, we're not in jeopardy of losing anything. We also don't have any project that's currently in the pipeline to be submitted. So I'm, I'm not that concerned.
So then based upon that, my only question is, should the implementation priority be moved to medium?
Yes.
Okay. The, it, other members of the board agree with that? It's, it was, was sets for high. And just given that we almost have.
Right.
Everything is, everything is high. So I just want to try to push a few things down category. Okay. Any other comments from the board? I, I think most of the changes then were just, you know, things we talked about in terms of setting the, the, the implementation priorities. And I think we were all in agreement as of the last meeting.
I, I have a comment on item five. If you're interested in this. That last sentence. I have a comment at the end. And at the last meeting, we were talking about, Kristen was suggesting making this more broad. We had a brief discussion about the neighborhood preservation stuff. And I was looking at that some more and I would like to talk to the board about that some more. So, but you said in the last meeting, you don't necessarily need to add it to the goals to, to continue discussion on that. So I just wanted to kind of throw it out there again, because as time goes on, I become more and more interested in that as a solution versus F A R. So. But if you tell.
I'm sure you're talking about that, the.
Neighborhood Conservation District?
Yeah, Neighborhood Conservation District.
Yeah.
Okay.
So maybe we, I don't know, maybe we do want to make this more broad and feedback, I guess is my.
So the conversation was not necessarily the, the board taking on implementing that because it's not, but providing the education to, to the community and neighborhoods, you know, that this is an option.
I guess I want to reopen that conversation about implementing something. And what would the process be?
It doesn't necessarily have to be, but I'll provide the board again with all the information.
Yeah, we'll talk about it after. Yeah, so that's why for like number five, you know, research effectiveness of zoning bylaw, the FAIR bylaw is very specific, but it seems like we're still trying to address the problem of mansionization. And there are, we haven't decided the best way to do that. So it almost seems like the goal is, you know, propose the top three ways the board can address, you know, mansionization. That's, that's the only reason I was trying to make that more broad because then Neighborhood Conservation District might be one of those ways. And we have kind of hooked to that. You know, F A R calculation might be one of those ways and there might be, you know, something else.
Yeah, or maybe just on that last sentence, which is already a comma, we can say, and continue to the discussion on like other potential measures.
Well, you can, first off, you can, you can change the title. It doesn't have to be the title.
But I wanted to make it specific enough that we could actually meet, you know, goals. So.
Well, and then so you can just, you can change the title.
Change the titles of, of six.
Five.
Five. Envision, am I? Oh, the version I'm looking at is different.
Well, yes, it's just one time to do. So, I mean, it could be, as you said, Kristen, it could be analyzing measures to mansionization. And then this one, the board has been discussing the effectiveness of.
Yeah, I would still keep the, the paragraph. It's fine.
Keep the paragraph, but then you can add.
Does that mean we get rid of four? That's a Neighborhood Conservation District. It's, we, we put it on the show.
I think we, no, it took me to show you.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. Again, I'm looking at, I, I swear this is the one I got today.
Up top for what we did last year.
Or you're talking about, you're talking about our update on last year's goal. So number four from, that was last year's. We are, I'm sorry, we were looking at like the upcoming years.
Oh, Ben, are you looking?
Oh, you have in the top section.
Yeah, so this, that's what we decided to do this year. And I think that's relevant, right? Like, you know, we decided to not implement it for a reason, but, you know, just for a reason, we're bringing it back to look at.
So my suggestion would be potentially in the context of the mansionization discussion, like we review what is Neighborhood Preservation District? How is it implemented? What would the process be? And then as a board, decide if we want to move forward with some next steps. Is that correct? Or, I, because I don't want to be, like, I don't know if now is the time for people to say, on the shelf, like, leave it there, or if everyone's up for the discussion of opening it up again, I guess. I just don't want to unilateral.
I think we can spend a little bit of time discussing what that process would be. Like, I, it's the concern you're expressing that if the board isn't taking action on it, how will anybody else know how to take that action?
Yeah, I just wanted to understand, do we implement a framework and then have the neighborhoods come in?
So I'll add this to the list.
Yeah, that's great. But, but yes, I, I think I. Yes.
Kristen, what did you want to put at the end?
At the end of.
You mentioned one additional sentence.
I think I had. You've got Neighborhood Conservation District. We talked about our, I, I don't, I can't think of anything else specific. I think, I think we were going to say, oh, yeah, sorry, continue the conversation on other potential mitigation measures. But I don't remember anything specific, so.
So is this submission?
Yes, that's great. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Thanks for that input. And with that, are we, do you need us to formally approve this? Yeah, you do.
And to adopt.
Adopt the planning board goals?
Forward it to the select board and.
Okay.
Other boards and committees.
Let me just ask, any other comments or questions on this from the board? So could I ask for a motion to that we adopt the planning board goals as, as edited this evening and forward them on to the select board as required?
I'll make that motion to adopt and as edited and forward them to the select board.
Thank you, Andrew. You have a second?
Second.
You have a second? Uh, with that, I will go to Linda first.
Yes.
Andrew?
Yes.
Kristen?
Yes.
Yes.
And I mean, yes, great. So that's done. The next item is liaison or in-town planner updates. Let me just ask, does, does everybody now know what committees they are liaison for and, and how to, you know, how to make sure they're getting notifications of meetings and the like? Okay, I'll take that as a yes. I will say that the CPC, which I'm the liaison for, their meeting, their most recent meeting was canceled. So I don't have an update.
Is this a slow season for CPC at all or?
Not really norm, I mean, slower. This is generally where applicants come in and ask questions about the process and do a preliminary presentation. Things get really busy starting in the fall when we start our site visits and reviewing applications and having further presentations from the applicants. So it gets to be like weekly meetings in December. Great time. So anybody, anybody else have any liaison updates?
Um, West Concord Advisory was canceled for.
They just canceled because vacations, people are gone.
I think they had a trouble with the quorum, yeah.
Yeah. Tough time to.
The only thing I need to verify is I I think I heard back from everybody here, the board will have executive session on this 10th regarding the signs litigation. I believe, I believe everybody in this meeting right now said they could do 5:30.
Yeah, I can imagine. I, I don't know that I told you that, but I can.
All right. So I will just convey that to town council and.
And that would be right before. So we'll have that executive session until the meeting starts at seven.
I need to contact the select boards.
Oh, but we would be virtual. Right.
So what, it will likely be two separate.
Okay.
The floor will give one for the executive session only, and then when that is over, that ends, and then the regular meeting starts.
Okay.
Uh, just on that note, if anybody doesn't get automated notices attended, published today, the explanation from the select board on the litigation.
Automated notices.
Oh, yeah, you can sign up on the website.
You can go through and you can click off all the different notices you, you wanted that. I actually don't know how to do it. My wife came downstairs and said, did you see this about the planning board?
You go to the, the, break your homepage and notice by our, last is notify me. You can sign up for whatever you want.
Yeah.
Yeah. That it's also posted on, because it's news, it's published on the homepage. Standing White Pond is closed, notice and all that.
Let's just have a question about paper signing. Are they here? Okay, good. I just make sure. I don't need to right now. Just, all right, thank you.
Okay. I will go ahead. Well, I, it is 7:45. So what I will do is in accordance to the provisions of MGL, chapter 41, section 81 dash T and the Town of Concord subdivision rules and regulations, to review the definitive subdivision plan application of Stephen Marsh for minor modifications to allow a lot to A be added to McCaller Lane, formerly Puka Road, and the existing Hosmer Meadow subdivision, parcel 3837. I open the public hearing, but we, I will immediately continue the here. I will move to continue the hearing without discussion to August 10th, 2021 at 8:00 PM.
Second.
Second. And now I will take a vote, uh, starting with Linda to do that.
Yes.
Andrew?
Yes.
Kristen?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Mama, yes. So that is continued. Thank you.
So on the August 10th meeting, we've got Concord Children's Center at what time? Seven?
I don't know.
Okay.
I, I actually vaguely recall that we said 7:30 on that.
We usually do 7:30.
Your seven o'clock item is the discussion with the West Concord Advisory Committee for the three annuals of the West Concord Design Guidelines.
Oh, okay.
And then 7:30 is the Concord Children's Center.
Great.
Would be the subdivision.
Got it. Okay.
And then hopefully nothing else sneaks on that agenda.
Great. With that, any general public comment? I see we've got a few non-board members on the line. If anybody has any public comment they'd like to make, the time is right. Yeah, and I can, you raise your hand, I can unmute you if that's not automatically done. Okay, seeing no raised hands, I think we're done for the evening.
I think you're making up for last meeting.
I'm, I'm, I'm prepping for the next one. All right, so. Yep, at 7:47 or 7:48 by my clock, you are adjourned. Thanks.
Thank you.